Live.
Hello, everybody. I'm sorry we're a little bit late. Our caucus meeting took a little longer than we would like. So we're going to start as usual with the public question period, and I'll read the questions that I see here from anonymous. Mr. Mayor, you continually say that buildings on Cote Saint-Luc Road that are within the legal limits for floors are not viable or profitable for developers, yet major renovations are occurring at 6191 and 5795, the boarded up building. How would you explain this? Okay, well, I don't know what's going on at the boarded up building. I wasn't aware that anything is. But now that you've informed me, Ms. or Mr. Anonymous, I'll certainly look into it. As for 6191, Cote Saint-Luc Road, they were at one point considering demolishing and building a much larger building. However, what they were proposing wasn't acceptable to the PAC, and ultimately, they went back to their original plan, which is total renovation of the inside and a little less total renovation of the outside of the building. And as to, does that mean that they're viable? Well, they already own the building, so it's not really comparable to somebody coming along, buying a building, tearing it down, making deals with the tenants so they move out and so on. So I'm not sure, but I can tell you that we expect to be having Alters do a study for us. In fact, we'll be passing, we'll be giving them the mandate later on this evening, and they will come back and they will answer those questions. What's viable? How much tax revenue do you get for different sized buildings, condos, apartment buildings, and so on? So we're going to have good information on that in about four or five weeks. That's as much as I can tell you on that subject. And I think that brings us to the end of the questions. The other questions had to do with, when can we see the agenda? The agenda should be on your screen, I think. And when's the meeting starting? Well, it started. So as usual, it's a little more awkward doing this remotely, and you'll see me looking away constantly because I have to look at the agenda on my iPad. So scrolling through the pages takes some time. 3.0 adoption of the agenda on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer, is resolved that the agenda of the regular meeting is hereby adopted as submitted. Anyone opposed? No. So moving on. The departmental monthly reports, and we'll start with councillor Wigginsburg, who will tell us all about our reduced summary schedule of events and so on. So councillor Wigginsburg.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well and are still protecting themselves from COVID. We are not past the danger of it, and we need to help protect each other and ourselves. So on that note, this summer, we added pop-up activities for residents. We've added yoga, boot camp, ads, and core, and zumba. These are all organized for adults, and we're currently running them weekly. To date, the children, we have also held two Arts in the Parks and one gardening workshop, and with each additional one, their groups are getting larger. Having said that, it's a max participant of 10 people. The movie Night in the Park right now has been postponed until at least August 23rd. Having said that, everything is still open, depending upon how everything is going. And probably the most important thing I want to talk about is programming is a blood drive, and I'm sure councillor Goldwax will mention again also later. But due to the present situation, the blood drive this year will be by appointment only. And to me, this is really important, that people please come, make the appointments. It is more important than ever, and what's going on today, that we help support the medical sides, the hospitals, each other, and the best way to do that is to give blood. So I'm asking, I'm sure councillor Goldwax will reiterate it and say it much better than I can, but please do not forget about the blood drive and do whatever you can, including making an appointment to come to it. Next is tennis, just to let people know in case they weren't aware, that starting July 8, we had opened the access to tennis to also non-residents. In sports programming, we have placed in the basketball area a tennis net, and also so that people could practice with it, and also pickleball players are using it. Hockey registration started June 1st, but it remains on hold until we know what's going on. And the beach volleyball, fitness, and basketball areas still remain closed. And then upcoming special event dates to be remembered is the Mary Anne Tranca shows on August 9 at 10:00 a.m. and August 18 at 7:00 p.m. We also have an August 23 of 5:00 p.m. family picnic, game night, a movie in the park. And the blood drive I mentioned, and right now, the pool is closing September 7. And thank you very much, Mayor. That is the end of my report.
Thank you very much. And councillor Edery on finance.
Okay, so finance, we did our, we finished our annual external auditor audit on the 2019 numbers. Our surplus was 2.015 million. We've moved excess cash into a separate account in order to get a higher interest rate, so we've moved about 11 million. That's not surplus. 11 million is just excess cash from what we need right now. So from a cash flow point of view, we're just trying to maximize revenue on idle cash. We've set up a new direct deposit system for suppliers, so we don't have to write checks. It's faster, easier, cheaper. Our park fund is now 1.02 million with another 430,000 in the pipeline, so we're looking at like 1.4 million. And we've got a new line in our budget now, which is the emergency measures, which is COVID-related, so we're up at 384,000 there as at July 16, 2020. On the good side, overtime is down. It's the lowest. It's been year-to-date since 2016. And I just want to make a particular shout out to Michel Richard with regards to purchasing. He's our purchasing director. We had a very last-minute sidewalk inclusion that we wanted to do, and he managed to do what usually takes him a week. He did that in a span of one day, from 6:00 in the morning until 10:00 in the evening, and managed to get it out. So if you see work being done on our sidewalks, it's a large part in appreciation to Michel Richard. That's about it for finance.
Thank you very much, councillor Edery, and we will move on to councillor Goldwax, Public Works, and others.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much. And thank you for being patient for the start of the meeting. So a couple of portfolios. So for Public Works, very quickly, I will tell you, and as councillor Edery just talked about, there are work that has started on roads and sidewalks as of July 13, and will continue the next several weeks on rehabilitation of sidewalks and roads. And this is ongoing out through the summer, so I thank everyone for their patience, and you will see the fruits of the labor once everything is completed, so thank you for that. Concerning IT, I will, I'm saving the best for last, that's why. Concerning IT, recently, the mayor, councillor Budning, our director general, Richard Sun, Thierry Houl, our IT guru, and Laurie, who is the head of communications, and myself, had multiple virtual meetings concerning the redevelopment of our website and the My Hampstead pages. The new My Hampstead test version, which we were able to look at during our meetings, looks phenomenal and will be much more user-friendly and complete. And I cannot wait when the new links are fully functional. Stay tuned. But I want to thank everyone for their hard work and their input on these important changes. So thank you very much for this. And we'll save the best for last, which is the blood drive. As councillor Wigginsburg has talked about the blood drive, it is a very unique year this year because it is not an open-door policy. It is strictly by appointment. This is something that has been near and dear to my heart for the past, well, 14 years with the town and for the past 24 years with my son. Following his birth as a micro-premier, I brought the blood drive to our town. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, giving blood is even more crucial and will help replenish the bleeding blood banks. The 14th Annual Blood Drive will be taking place on August 25 from 1:30 to 8:30 by appointment only. I ask everyone to please call 1-800-343-7264, option 3, or if you go onto their website, Hema Quebec, or you can send an email at je'dun@hemaquebec.qc.ca or igive@hemaquebec.qc.ca. I'm asking everyone to come out and make your appointment, come out, give blood, and save a life like I did for my son 24 years ago. And those are my reports, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you mentioned the website development, and that's something I'm also very keen on. But I don't want to mislead anyone. Redoing our entire website is a massive project, so you're not going to see too much. Perhaps the new My Hampstead stuff may come out sooner, but the whole thing, it's going to be a little bit of time. Okay, moving on, councillor Budning, urban planning, and also, I guess, website stuff, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillor Goldwax. Indeed, I mean, I won't reiterate what both of you have mentioned, but certainly a lot of work has been going into the new vision for the website, as well as the new My Hampstead portal, which I'm not really sure that as many residents as we'd like are using the My Hampstead portal, which is a great resource and will become even more user-friendly in the very near future. And there's a lot of functionality and permitting issues and so forth that are going to be interactive. So we'll be going through that in the future and informing residents of the different programs and offers that are available to them on that. Other than that, with the communications portfolio, there is a new photographer coming into town that's going to be taking some new photo shots of the city, just to update our records and to have some new social media photos available, and to, you know, have with the new seasons changing and so forth. As well, the new newsletter has gone out, which is our second edition of newly designed newsletter. So residents will have seen that, and it has a bunch of useful information in it as well. With regards to My Hampstead, the accounts, there are currently 1,551 accounts, but we certainly do encourage residents to subscribe if they haven't. Very quickly with urban planning, there were 54 permits issued this month, and year-to-date, 203 permits. Year-to-date, about nine, just over $9 million of work has gone into residents' homes for a value permitting of just about $95,000. So people are investing into their homes and continuing to upgrade the value of our community. 79 inspections were done, and zero infractions were noticed so far. So that means that people are actually doing their work, conforming to the permits. And all things considering, we hope everyone remains safe, and we look forward to seeing you over the coming months, hopefully in person. Knock on wood, we'll be able to have some in-person meetings in the near future.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much, councillor Budning. And finally, councillor Schaefer on legal and public security.
Last but not least, Mr. Mayor. My first portfolio that I'll deal with tonight deals with legal, and I want to thank our town clerk, Major Pierre Tap, for his report, which I will read. During this period, we had two assemblies of the municipal council. The RCM been on July 6, and we had an SCM on July 27. Both council meetings were held virtually. Most of the clerk's work was done from his home office, except for a few days, which took place at town hall. The town clerk was always available to respond to requests from the various services of the municipality, whether by email, web conference, call, or direct calls. More particularly, we have been in daily contact with the head of our urban planning section to resolve the various situations requiring our expertise on a day-to-day basis. Alternative situations, I will keep the council informed on this matter. We worked in collaboration on the development of the agenda for both July's council meeting and its follow-up. We followed the development of government guidelines on the coronavirus crisis daily. We still discuss with different clerks from other towns regarding the delicates situation, and we are in contact with the clerks of other cities, and we share important logistic information. The court being in slow motion as for the past months, the majority of our litigation files have not changed in recent times. We are in constant contact with our lawyers on these different cases. The status document for each of our files is included in this monthly report for use of the members of the council. Thank you, Pierre, for your report. My other department has to deal with public security, and I want to thank our chief operations officer, Mike Fitzgerald, as well as Lieutenant Brent Roberts for this report. And I will tell the people out there that there was 192 calls this month, this past month of July, to public security. There's been foot patrol and bike patrols seasonal. Public security authorized staff has remained at a total of one lieutenant, one chief operations officer, five constables, and five auxiliary. The administration section, the department is functioning well in the COVID-19 situation. We have hired two new auxiliary officers to assist with the workload. We have started the vacation period, which should allow our staff to, a chance to generate themselves. One officer off on short-term medical for non-life-threatening illness. The new auxiliary officers are almost trained to the basics. Moral is good, and the team is functioning well. New vehicle is being equipped at a time of this report. I should point out to the public and to our council that in the next few days, we will have received our third Ford Explorer police interceptor. The difference between this new one and our two Ford Explorers that we have now is that this one will be hybrid, because all the new Ford Explorers for municipalities and for the police of Montreal and for the Certades de Québec will be hybrid vehicles. Ford has decided that we should try a hybrid vehicle for public security, police, et cetera, operations with that vehicle. Officer Shap, along with Officer Hardy, were present at, in the Netherwood area. Through their quick and calm action, they have saved the victim further injury. I want to point out that this is not the first time that Officer Shap and Officer Hardy have been involved in situations which could have become far more serious. And I want to say on behalf of council, kudos to Officer Shap and Officer Hardy. On July 1, contractors shut down the work for working on a statutory holiday. Fines were issued. Fire pot on fire put out by PSO probably saved a home. Resident was not on location. A high number of tickets have been issued for contractors, as well as for pool infractions. Lieutenant Roberts and the other men should get all the credit for the ongoing success, for the achievements of the department. And once again, kudos to Lieutenant Brent Roberts for a job well done. And by the way, our chief operations officer Fitzgerald is presently on holiday, so Lieutenant Roberts is taking the lead, and as usual, he does a great job. I want to thank him for his good work. And that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I guess I'm on live. I want to ask a question of our town clerk before we continue. Pierre, do we have to add item 6.1 to the agenda? Because I can just ask for a motion on that if we need to do it. I should do it?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We would simply need someone to propose and to second to modify the agenda to add the point 6.2.
6.1.
6.1, yeah.
What is 6.1?
Okay, that's the Altus contract. Okay, would a councillor please make a motion to add an item to the agenda?
We haven't discussed it.
I'm sorry?
We haven't discussed it.
Well, the time to discuss it was when it was mentioned during our caucus meeting.
I must have missed it, that we had, that it came up during caucus.
Well, it's quite simple. So I'll discuss it as soon as we add it to the agenda. So would someone please move adding item 6.1, which is granting a contract to the Altus group?
I would, I would present the motion that we add 6.1, you said, to our agenda to approve a contract to, granted to the Altus group.
I would prefer to discuss it before.
I agree. This did not come up in caucus before, Mr. Mayor. We need to discuss this.
Okay, so in that case, we can have a recess. Is it possible, Thierry, to make us not live while we discuss it?
Yes, Mr. Sun, you will have to make a different call. So all of you, I will mute all of you. And Mr. Sun, you will have to make a different call.
What, to go back to the caucus?
Yeah.
Well, do we go back on to the iPad?
Yeah.
Thierry, can't you just make us pre-live again? Or no?
No.
Okay, so we all have to disconnect that, Thierry? Yes, we have to disconnect that?
So what we can do is we can mute.
We still live?
Yes, we are still live.
So we can simply mute our microphones. I'll call a recess. We can go back to our caucus meeting on our iPads, and then we'll come back to this meeting. Will that work?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so everybody mute your microphones, and for the.
Hello? 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 I don't understand. What am I supposed to do now? Thierry?
Leon, you have to answer on the iPad or the iPhone. Same for you, Mr. Schaefer.
But I don't get any emails. I don't get any emails.
But I don't have anything on the iPad.
No, Harvey and Leon.
Yes?
Have to get, pause yourself on this meeting, put yourself on mute, and then go into the caucus meeting that we were in previously.
Okay, okay.
...
I think everybody is here.
Okay, Miss Mara, I'll put you back on.
Bill, you're muted. Bill, you're muted.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry, we're back. We were going, we were considering adding a, another item to the agenda. We have decided we're not adding the item to the agenda tonight. We will have a special council meeting to deal with that item, maybe other items. In the not too distant future. So we are back to our regular agenda, 5.0, adoption of the minutes on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, Goldwax.
Okay, motion of councillor Etary, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved, the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 6, 2020, and of the special council meeting of July 27, 2020 are hereby approved as submitted. Anyone opposed? No, so it's adopted. And that brings us to, I think, seven something.
Whoops. Seven point one.
Brings us to seven point one, and I believe someone's going to make a motion to defer that.
What is ten point one?
The bylaw 101010 concerning tariffs.
No, tariffs, okay. On motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Etary.
Etary. It is resolved to approve by law number 1010-10, modifying by law number 1010 on tariffs. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. Brings us to seven point two. I think someone wants to make a motion to defer seven point two. Anybody?
Etary.
On motion.
Goldwax.
Okay, on motion of councillor Etary, seconded by councillor Goldwax. There's a motion to defer item seven point two. Anyone opposed? Okay, that will presumably come back at the same special council meeting where we'll deal with six point one. And that brings us to, whoops.
Eight point one.
Mr. Mayor, I have to say something on eight point one, deposit of the minute of the PAC. The minute of the PAC will be adopted with a modification to the, let's say, resolution of the PAC. Name say 2020 068 and 069. Just to add that councillor Budnik didn't take participation in the vote.
Yes, that is correct. I thank you for that intervention. So with that note, I will announce that each member of council has received copies. The town clerk deposits the minutes of the regular planning advisory committee meeting held on July 13, 2020. The council takes note of the deposit of said minutes by the town clerk and of the modification. Eight point two, Ten Holly Road. Ten Holly Road.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that I'm going to be recusing myself from item eight point two and eight point three.
Duly noted, duly noted.
Yeah, just, just, I was just waiting for you to say that. Thank you. Okay, so councillor Budnik is recusing himself from eight point two and eight point three. Now, eight point two, concerning some minor exemptions for Ten Holly Road, on motion of councillor.
Etary.
Etary, seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg. It is resolved that the exemption to the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for detached single-family dwelling located at Ten Holly Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee on July 13, 2020 is refused as recommended by the PAC. The project partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No.
Just to note, Mr. Mayor, there were no intervention, I received no intervention from anybody about, about this minor exemption.
No, okay, thank you. I presume everybody can hear your comments, Pierre?
I hope so.
The answers, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, eight point three, Ten Holly Road, on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Etary.
Etary. It is resolved that the addition for a detached single-family dwelling located at Ten Holly Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on July 13, 2020 is refused as recommended by the PAC. Project partially meets the prescribed standards of zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. Brings us to eight point four. Eleven Holly Road. On, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the modifications of the front facade for detached single-family dwelling located at eleven Holly Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on July 13, 2020 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The project meets the prescribed standards of zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. And that brings us to eight point five. Twelve Merton Crescent. On motion of councillor.
Budnik. Goldwax.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the addition in the rear yard of a detached single-family dwelling located at twelve Merton Crescent and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on July 13, 2020 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Adopted. Brings us to eight point.
Eight point six. We received no intervention on eight point six, Mr. Mayor.
No intervention, okay. Two thirty-seven Hiero Crescent. On motion of councillor.
Budnik. Schaefer.
Yeah, I didn't hear. Who's the first one?
Budnik and Schaefer.
Okay, a motion of councillor Budnik, seconded by councillor Schaefer, is resolved with the minor exemption to the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for a detached single-family dwelling located at two thirty-seven Hiero Crescent and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on July 13, 2020 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The project only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. That brings us to eight point seven.
No intervention on this one too, Mr. Mayor.
No interventions. Eleven Merton Crescent, on motion of councillor.
Budnik.
Budnik, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the minor exemption to the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for detached single-family dwelling located at eleven Merton Crescent and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on July 13, 2020 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The project only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No, okay, that's adopted. Brings us to, whoops. Brings us to eight point eight. Sixty-six thirty McDonald Avenue. On motion of councillor.
Budnik, Goldwax.
Budnik, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the facade modifications to its semi-detached single-family dwelling located at sixty-six thirty McDonald Avenue and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on July 13, 2020 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that the modifications are acceptable if the proposed balcony respects the point six meter minimum distance to the property line. The project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. Brings us to eight point nine sixty-three Merton Crescent.
No intervention, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. On motion of councillor.
Budnik, Max.
Councillor Budnik, seconded by councillor Goldwax. Is resolved that the minor exemption to the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for detached single-family dwelling located at sixty-three Merton Crescent and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on July 13, 2020 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that a distance of point six meters must be left between the street line and the proposed fence to allow edge planting on private property. The project only partially meets the prescribed standards of zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? And that's adopted. And that brings us to eight point ten.
An intervention has been received and transferred to all the members of the town council, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This is two-two-nine Netherwood Crescent. On motion of councillor.
Budnik.
Budnik, seconded by councillor.
Etary.
Etary. It is resolved that the minor exemption to the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for detached single-family dwelling located at two-two-nine Netherwood Crescent and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on July 13, 2020 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC. Provided that the existing strip of grass must be kept, the driveway must not exceed seven meters. And one meter must be respected between the driveway and the property line. The project only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No, okay. Brings us to nine point one, approval of disbursements for the month of July 2020. On motion of councillor.
Etary.
Etary, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that disbursements for the period from June sixteen, twenty twenty to July fifteen, twenty twenty, in the total amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars. Seven hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-one cents are hereby approved. Anyone opposed? No. I will mention that the reason this amount is so large, over seventeen million dollars, because most of that money is simply being transferred from one account to an account that pays higher interest. It's not really an expenditure. Okay, moving on. To ten point one. Resolution mandating the city of Montreal to carry out group, a group's call for tenders for the supply and delivery of various fuels on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Etary.
Etary. It is resolved that the council authorizes the town of Hampstead's participation in the group call for tenders for the granting of three-year contracts for the supply and delivery of various fuels for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. With the possibility of two renewals for the years twenty-four and twenty-five. That's the town of Hampstead delegates the city of Montreal to prepare the specifications and other tender documents to proceed with the calls for tenders to receive and to analyze and submissions and to report the results to the participating municipalities. That's the town of Hampstead delegates the city of Montreal to adjudicate the proposed contracts. Anyone opposed? No. No one opposed, right? Okay, adopted. That brings us to, whoops. I think I've got in.
Ten point two. The granting contract of purchasing of three tractors with snowplows.
Okay.
Page two sixty-seven.
Yeah, I don't see the page numbers. Yeah, okay, ten point two. Two sixty-seven, all right. On motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer is resolved. That's the contract for the purchase of three tractors equipped with snowplows being is hereby approved. The whole is more amply delineated hereunder. It goes to Lang Patino Equipment Limited, Kubota Montreal, and the total price, including taxes, three hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Anyone opposed?
No.
Nope, so that's adopted. And that brings us to, whoops. Eleven point one, approval of the hiring list of white collar students.
You missed ten point three, Mr. Mayor, the sidewalk contracting.
Whoops, sorry. Ten point three. Contract for the repair sidewalk sections, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that following quotations for the following contract being here and is hereby approved as more amply delineated hereunder. It goes to Kojalak Inc., repair sidewalk sections, grand total with taxes, four hundred sixty-three thousand two hundred seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Anyone opposed?
Nope.
Okay, that brings us now to eleven point one, approval of the hiring. It's actually just one person. It is proposed by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg, seconded by councillor.
Etary.
Etary. That, the town council approves the hiring of a white collar student employee as detailed on the list from the community services and recreation department. The hiring is subject to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local four-two-nine and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No, okay, eleven point two, approval of the temporary hiring. It was proposed by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg, seconded by councillor.
Etary.
Etary. To approve the temporary hiring of Mr. Atubah Jabari Howell as public security officer, subject to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local four-two-nine and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No. Now we get to the second question period, and there are some questions here. First one is, when will in-person meetings resume? And the answer is, I don't know. We are being cautious. Quebec is currently allowing meetings with up to two hundred and fifty people indoors. I certainly don't think that's safe, even with our capacity limitations. Community center is still not open. And we do not feel comfortable opening it at this point in time. We want to keep everybody safe. I'd much prefer personally to have regular, go back to the regular live meetings. It's certainly easier. But safety comes first. So at some point in the future, we will go back to live meetings, but we're not there yet. Okay. And here we have anonymous again. Can you please explain what happened with the first study of Cote d'Alene Road that was talked about in the winter and due in March? This was supposed to be all encompassing, including traffic, building size, environmental impact, et cetera. Will residents ever be able to see the results for this original study paid for with tax dollars? Please explain why a new study is needed. Well, the answer is, there are several studies, as I said previously. There is a study from Urban Planning Consulting Group, BC2, only recently completed. There was a study by Cima Plus on traffic, completed some time ago. Their shadowing studies are part of the BC2 study. And now we are shortly going to be going out, I hope, to the Altus Group for a study of the economic viability for different-sized buildings. And also the potential extra tax revenue for different-sized buildings. and also the potential extra tax revenue for different sized buildings, something that that all of us need to know in order for us to have the full picture. So we're almost there. But it's still going to be just a little bit longer. Once we have everything, everything will be on our website. Everything will be on our website, and everyone will be able to read all the studies and form whatever opinions they wish. Now we have a question from a person who is not anonymous, so Jeremy Levy. Welcome. And he says, I would like to know in very specific terms why this discussion needed to be held behind closed doors. That's the way it's done. We have caucus meetings where we discuss things in private, and then we have council meetings where we discuss things in public. It's done that way. In every municipality on the island and pretty much everywhere, except some jurisdictions, none in Quebec, where caucus meetings in private are not allowed. Personally, I think being able to express our views frankly in private is a good idea. But at the end of the day, decisions are only made in public. Now, anonymous has a question and or an opinion. Anonymous says, this long break is completely disrespectful to the residents of the town who have been online for over an hour and 20 minutes waiting for this meeting. This should have been discussed beforehand, and if it could not have been, should have been brought up next month. Not acceptable. Okay, comment is noted. At this point, we are out of questions. Would anyone like to move a German?
Goldwax.
Councillor Goldwax, seconded by.
Wigginsburg.
Councillor Wigginsburg, anyone opposed? We adjourn. Thank you very much. And I will mention that the council will now go back into private to con, to keep discussing various caucus items as we typically do. So yes, I'm sorry, it was a long meeting for those listening, the public part, but it's a much longer meeting for those of us who are on council with our caucus meeting before the council meeting and our caucus meeting now continuing in two seconds in private. So thank you very much for attending, and I wish you a good evening, rest of the evening, and we're signing off the public meeting.
Stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
So good night, everyone. Have a nice caucus meeting.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.